It was good. Oh, man, it must have hit. I don't know how many people, fifty-six, we could go. Who wants? We don't, we check on.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's good.
All things nice to, uh.
Let me say, good evening, council. Good evening, residents. It was a cold day. Want to call you December eighth, twenty twenty-five, Harpersford County Council Meeting to Order. Excuse me. Just all stand for a minute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, council motion to approve agenda or any revisions?
Yes, I had one, uh, on, uh, seven, seven F. That's due at the post office. I thought maybe we can move that up.
Somewhere. I'm sorry, leave it what?
Seven up, move it up in a higher.
Well, is it going to require going into executive session? If it does, I don't want to clear the room out.
Uh, I'm just trying to do it for Patty. She didn't have to be here the whole time. Are you? Okay, then leave it there.
Okay.
David? I was gonna recommend five E come forward. Interesting. Zach's time. He needs to get out of there too.
The entire five E?
Um, he's the one giving the plain official report, so, yeah.
Okay. Where do you want to put it, David?
Um, I guess after we approve the minutes or at, up to five A, after dark skies, five B.
Okay. Now, so the recommendation is to move five E, one, two, and three to follow five A one.
Second?
Got a second from who? Storm, discussion. All those in favor of the motion?
I.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Wait for the chair to catch up here for a minute. Public comments?
I don't think anybody signed.
Okay, thanks, Pat. All right, mayor's announcements, I have just two. Kevin? Cookie walk. Cookie walk. Saturday.
Another question. Why is it called a walk? Isn't it like in one place?
They're, they're in here, but David, we would take a basket
Uh-huh.
and you would walk from cookie to cookie.
Thank you. Oh, you don't want to hang me. I see your basket at the end of the day.
So that is, uh, Saturday, this Saturday from one thirty, uh, excuse me, from one o'clock to three thirty, um, downstairs next to the police station. Kevin, you have any comments you want to make?
Yep, I do. Um, so this is my first council meeting since the regular council meeting in October. Uh, for those who don't know, I had ischemic stroke on the twenty-second of, of October. And I'm doing much better than I was on the twenty-second of October. Um, I'm still recovering. I'm about, I guess ninety-five, ninety-seven percent recovered. Um, but I just want to thank the mayor and other people who contacted me and wished me well. So, thank you.
And we're all grateful, Kevin.
Welcome back.
Hilltop, anything about law?
Um, Laurel Samansky, uh, project manager of the Hilltop House Hotel. So, um, yeah, we've pretty much have everything in order to, uh, start moving forward and um, we have a special loan that we needed a special guarantee for that was not made. So, we, uh, are gonna pause the project until the rates go down, um, and we can have a construction loan that fits the interest rate that we are, uh, that we have in, in our pro forma, so, um, I don't know if it's gonna be four months. I don't know if it's gonna be six months. But, uh, we've heard rumors that there, we are selling the property and that is not true. Um, we've heard rumors that we had investors that pulled out and that's not true. Um, it's just a matter of, uh, needing to get a lower interest rate. Um, the, uh, overlook access will remain open as of now and, um, we're doing some work inside the houses, just, you know, use that time towards getting other things going, so. So, any questions?
Hmm.
Yeah.
No.
No, it's not the best move. Um, I believe it's still coming around the corner quickly and, um, and I'll still be around, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. National Parks Service Superintendent.
Evening, everyone. My preference, anyway. Um, happy holidays. Very nice to be back with you today. Um, I have a couple of updates for everybody. Uh, first, I am pleased to report that the park has received six new EV buses for our shuttle fleet. These buses will help us continue to reduce emissions in our operations and better serve our visitors. Um, uh, the town of Bolivar, starting tomorrow, is actually hosting a training that we're gonna be having for our operators, our mechanics, and for personal contractors, so they can get to know the buses and understand them. Once we've gone through that training, a lot of which is related to safety, we will start to, uh, integrate the EV buses into our current fleet. Um, but it won't be an all EV fleet right away. Um, we still have a number of projects in front of us related to converting our existing diesel bus garage to an EV bus garage. It's a big project. Um, the contractor will start working on that next month. Um, you will see, uh, lines being dug along the entrance road to Kevlar Heights Parking Lot. Uh, once they have the utilities laid in, they will move down to bus garage itself, and at that point, we don't expect there to be any dis- disruptions. Um, it'll take about a year to get the EV bus garage fully operational. And in the meantime, we are exploring other options with other partners to charge the buses. So it's a completely different operation than what we've been used to. Um, we are the first park in the National Park Service to have these buses. Um, Zion, uh, National Park and Grand Canyon National Park both have shuttle buses, since they use different companies' buses, so we are the the test case for this particular manufacturer, so we're looking forward to seeing how they perform. So far, the ones that we've tested are great. I would encourage, however, anybody who is, um, walking, riding, biking, recreating, driving along Shenandoah and is used to hearing our buses, right, our big, uh, Bronco Lee guide? These are very quiet. You will not hear them, so please keep your eyes out. And please inform your neighbors that, you know, the buses are gonna start getting real quiet and you don't want to walk out in front of one just because you didn't want, right? So, safety message there on the EVs. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Mayor Vaughn for providing opening remarks last Friday at the opening ceremony of Old Time Christmas down on the Green. Thank you, sir. Um, given the cold temperatures over the weekend, the park had a decent turnout for our program, Living History Events and Programs that we did over the weekend. Um, and we are looking forward to the community events coming up this coming weekend. Um, and that's about all I've got. Andrew, did you want to add anything about the Gateway conversation?
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm gonna designate the National Parks, uh, Art Parks Gateway Community Coordinator. And the goal is meant to explore ways that the Park Service works with and collaborates on shared concerns with our favorite communities, of course. Harper's Ferry is probably our biggest gateway move or primary one, perhaps. Not our only one, so of course, probably our. And I do, uh, have a meeting with Jesse Milk, so, um, to, for brainstorming how we deal with that.
Questions? Chris?
I had a question about the EV buses. Will the, the bike wrecks, uh, bike wrecks be integrated on those?
All the buses have bike wrecks.
Great.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you, Tom.
Oh, yeah, one more. How's the Byron Bridge, uh, project?
I, I, I think that somebody would ask that. If I'm aware, uh, monthly meetings, uh, Harper's Ferry staff sits in on the monthly construction meetings with, uh, C N O now. Uh, as far as I can tell, they're basically still within their period of performance. So we should be seeing them, you know, be wrapping up sometime in the spring.
Anything else? Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
I have a quick comment about the Park Service, if I may.
Sure.
So last month, I received a call from a resident who asked me, I don't know how I got the job, but I got the call, and he asked me if I could, um, help his young daughter, um, track down and recapture their escaped dog. So they all went with a dog catcher hat on it. And I eventually found the girl and the dog down at the train station downtown and, um, I found some tourists and I found that they had already been found by Chief Ranger Ryan Levens, who had, um, so the dog had run out onto the train vessel. The visitors ran out after the dog. The little girl was standing there on the, you know, she knew not to go on the train track. She didn't know what to do, so she's all upset and, um, Ranger Levens happened upon the scene and he got all sorts of, the dog was rescued, the, nobody got ran over by the train, and he was standing there and waiting for, um, you know, a responsible somebody to come, um, for the kid. And, um, you know, there was some heroism involved here, you know? Just good community policing and law enforcement, you know, the Park Service provided for the town, and it was great. You know, it could have been a horrible situation, and it was, and I wanted to thank you. The guy who called me asked me to extend his thanks to the Park Service and, uh, don't think I'm going too far here and, um, uh, say thank you for the entire community in the town. You know, it's a, um, it's a small thing, but it's a big thing. Could have been a bad thing. And it was it, so thank you very much.
I will make sure Chief Ranger Levens hears stuff.
Thank you, Jesse, for those kind comments. Any other community from the council about announcements, Storm?
Yeah, so I'm more known for levity and humor, but, um, may, some of you may have heard about an incident this weekend, and I feel like, you know, this is a small venue and a small but, uh, I'm in this position and I have a megaphone and I'm going to use it. So ethnic and immigrant populations are being targeted, targeted here in Jefferson County, and so far, over fifty people have been detained and at least one seriously injured. This weekend, an effort by the U.S. Marshals to apprehend one individual became a brutal and reckless ice raid at the Food Line Mall up three forty. Most notably at Meidegoiata Restaurant. Eyewitnesses have reported that staff and customers alike were exposed to pepper spray as a cadre of heavily armed agents burst in and brutalized those that fit their given profile, what they were supposed to look for. Several people were detained and two, at least two were taken away along with the person who was the subject of the war. This is not normal. This is not normal. These are our neighbors and members of our community, and they're here to work hard, live their lives, and take care of their families. And America has always been the hope and refuge of those who dare to dream for a better life and who are willing to work for it. And this brutal and reckless action was also certainly not what anyone should expect from law enforcement of any kind. Maybe in other countries where corruption and brutality are established facts and where good people and good ideas are ground down. But this is America still, and it's not Russia or North Korea or Germany in nineteen thirty-three. And regardless of your background or political beliefs, we must condemn it individually and collectively and never for a moment entertain that it's acceptable. No matter where it happens, no matter how often, it's not normal, it's not acceptable. And in other places such as Los Angeles and Chicago and Charlotte and now New Orleans and other places that have been widely victimized by this kind of state-sanctioned brutality, neighbors are helping neighbors in small ways and big ways and visible ways and ways you do not see. All decent people should keep their eyes and ears open and keep in touch with those you know who might be affected by these type of government actions. A vigil is being planned so that people can peacefully gather and stand in solidarity with vulnerable communities most directly affected by these actions. And, um, I encourage you to visit Indivisible Jefferson County W V, their website or the Facebook page to be the first to know the details when they're set. Thank you.
Thank you, Storm. A lot of courage to do that, Storm, thank you. Um, council draft minutes, you should have them. I just have two. Does the chair need to be corrected? Do we have all three or just?
No, there's one that's still to be reconstructed.
Okay.
Somebody might have volunteered to do that and not completed.
Okay, let's, uh, let's find him and, and hang him up.
Good idea.
Uh, Storm, you want to go ahead and conduct the, uh, approval of the, um, minutes for November ten?
Uh, I'll move to approve the minutes of November ten as submitted.
Is there a second on the motion? We have a second from Chris, discussion on a motion to approve November ten. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Opposed, zero. Motion carries seven, zero. Storm on October two, one, twenty-one.
Is that the one I completed? I, I move to, to approve the minutes of twenty-one October as submitted.
Is there a second on the motion? Second, Chris, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Opposed, motion carries seven, zero.
If I may, I'd also like to thank Chris Crabb for his help.
Thank you, Chris. Town reports, Dark Sky. Um, Storm, you want to introduce this and then, uh, we'll bring, you can bring Karen in, okay, Eric?
Yeah, so dark skies or the lighting ordinance is something that has been a dream of the town for a long time and has been in the comprehensive plan. There were several fits and starts and false starts and wrong turns under the last council. It was initiated and a terrific committee was, uh, was established, put together. It's, uh, myself, uh, the chair, Karen Segesi, uh, Zach Morse, uh, were planning, and then Kathy Gray, not present. And, uh, we really did go through, um, uh, a whole stack of, uh, ordinances. There was a feedback process. Uh, but I will let, uh, our chair, Karen Segesi, describe the rest. It's been a wonderful process and we're very proud to be able to present something now.
Okay, I recognize this, Karen?
Good evening. On behalf of the Harper's Ferry Dark Skies Committee, I'm presenting a draft light or lighting ordinance, a list of recommendations and information related to light meters, and that preparation for the light meters was done by Jesse Milk, so thank you so much for that information. About eighteen months ago, this committee was created by town council to consider the need for lighting ordinance and to provide our findings and recommendations to the council. Storm has gone ahead and introduced the group, so I won't do that again. Upon forming, it was very clear that each appointed member of the committee was focused on formulating recommendations that fit the needs of our unique town. We engaged the public through stakeholders meeting, a public meeting for town residents and property owners, and a public survey. We literally walked the streets of the town at night to assess the town's we consulted a number of inactive lighting ordinances from several towns and cities and reviewed policies and best practices from leading professional lighting organizations. The draft ordinance and recommendations before you this evening are a culmination of those focused activities. To facilitate clarity and to answer some questions upfront related to the ordinance itself, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to go over some of the recommendations. Um, the recommendation sheet that you have is two pages and it's in no particular order of importance. This was just about brainstorming. Um, so one of the things is to consider what, what becomes of the Dark Sky Committee after this. Uh, one of the suggestions that we had was getting through the actual, what's decide to adopt this ordinance and it makes it through an ordinance review committee, having us as being a helpful hand in, um, helping the public become acquainted with that ordinance. Some of those activities that we talked about, we kind of almost looked at like a little educational plan would be door-to-door flyers and open house, kind of like we did for the public. Have all of the information that we gathered, all the data that we gathered from surveys, have information about responsible lighting there so people can see these displays, things like that. Um, placing information on the town website, uh, Facebook, newsletter, uh, contacting the local press and the, and the local chapters, been involved with some activities. Um, like I said, the light meter selection was something that Jesse helped us with. When you go through that, there's three meters in that selection. The, the middle meter was the professional grade meter, and that was the one that was recommended for you in the corporation for multiple reasons. One is price point, two is ease of use, and third is just appropriability for what we would be doing and what we would be asking the O C O to be doing for, um, enforcement and, and measurement. Uh, one of the things that we did do that was a built-in feature, now, we consulted several towns and cities. We also looked at several lighting organizations. Um, the one lighting organization that is preeminent with getting, uh, towns and cities to have ordinances is Dark Sky International. So one of the things that we did do is that we looked at, uh, giving you an ordinance that you can build upon. If in the future you decide that through, um, interest in things like astrotourism and tourism in general, um, that you would like to have some type of designation through Dark Sky International, well, what that gives you is that gives you a lot more visibility out there in the community. It gives you pre-advertising. Um, and I can tell you, astrotourism is something that's been taking off. This is just a copy of one of the West Virginia magazines, so this is something that could definitely benefit our town. So as you go through that, I wanted to be really clear that when we came to the table, there was no one organization, there was no one city, there was no one town. We divided the, the, um, aspects of this ordinance up amongst the group and we, uh, we took it out, we did our homework, we did our presentations, we read through it carefully. Um, so that what you have before you is something that actually matched the data that we got back from our survey, um, reflecting on what the town says they want, they don't want. If you have any questions for me, I, I realize that the ordinance went out a little before the meeting and I, you probably haven't had time to become familiar with it, but.
Um, I've got a couple. Are, are you finished?
One other thing I did want to add is as I was going through the final draft and doing the, the formatting, I did notice that we went to the trouble of putting a, a chart in there for new builds and how to, how to calculate out their new builds, and one of the things that we forgot to say is the use of the, uh, standard lighting ordinance would be something twenty-five lumens per square foot, so that would be, that is what's in one of the rec, one of the recommendations from the state of West Virginia and one of their ordinances statewide as well as across the board. That is not something we voted on as a committee, so if that's a point of concern, I can take that back to the committee. But I, I was reading through, that would help that section make a lot more sense when you were trying to figuring out how many lumens per square foot and overall that a new build or a renovation with significant lighting changes would, would incorporate.
Okay. Um, yeah, now, so I just have a couple of quick questions. Uh, as I read through here, I, I see a lot of responsibilities falling upon the code officer. Um, has the code officer been brought into this yet?
We did invite him in, but we understand that he's not required to come to our meetings and, and one of the things that we did want to do is we did write up a scenario of what that measurement would look like. And this could be something that he entertained once a month in a night audit by specific complaints. So if we have complaints, they would come into the office. Um, we could put them on a list for him and we would suggest that he, he looks at the same moon cycle, so it'd be something like new moon would be the best time to do it because that would be giving you the best results. And it could be something he does once, once a month. It could be something that he can do, uh, with the meter itself. It's, we would not be asking him to go around on a regular basis or every time a phone call comes in. We realized that that would be way too much for him. There's actually a whole section under recommendations about what it would look like to do that actual measurement. And it's something that he can actually do very quickly, and I, I respect that. I understand that we do mention him an awful lot in the ordinance.
Yeah, um, let's not lose track of the fact that he's just part-time.
Yes.
Um, and let me make a suggestion. Um, it might be a good idea, and I'll let Kevin know, uh, to have him meet privately with you and Storm. And the two of you can, can discuss your expectations and then, um, let Kevin, you know, express, you know, his concerns, if he has any. I, I have not discussed this with Kevin. I do not know. Yes, Storm?
I'll say that that was one of the things that we, uh, very carefully, and in the survey was a bit polarizing, was with these standards, having something that was enforceable and meaningful without going too far. And it is important that the O C O, uh, understand how, uh, it operates and what the standard is, so it would be good to sit, sit down with them.
Yeah. Um, and as I was looking at the enforcement part, you know, you know, we can't get, we can't get people to cut their grass, let alone turn the light switch off. Um, and so you have sanctions in here, a hundred, three hundred and five hundred dollars and there's a big process to sanction a resident for an issue. I mean, it's, it's a big process. And so it may look good here, well, the first time if they don't turn the light switch off, we're gonna bang them with a hundred bucks and the second time or whatever. It's a lot more involved to get compliance, um, through the magistrate, through our court system, so. And Kevin will be able to, to address that hopefully in there. And I guess the final thing is, what about, and I, I couldn't see an exception, but what about existing residential exterior lights that do not meet, meet anything in here? Um, is Kevin gonna come around and, and rip my porch light out? Um, because it doesn't.
That amortization for eighteen months, that would give them eighteen months from the inaction of that of, of the ordinance for them to come to compliance. This was a struggle that we had. Now, we, we, we mirrored some, some successful ordinances when we looked at this enforcement portion of it. And it's kind of hard to have an ordinance out there stating you need to do these things unless there are repercussions for not following those guidelines. unless there are repercussions for not following those guidelines. So we wanted to number one, give that eighteen month period for people to get used to this and be able to take a look at their own lighting. Now, one of the suggestions that we had was community involvement was contacting the local chapter. Dark Sky International has this, you can actually become dark sky compliant in your own home. And it's very simple to do. You walk around. It's, it's very self-explanatory. And it uses the, the key elements of having your lights, you know, pointed down, having them fully shielded and having more yellow tones to the light, so the softer tone to the light. And we could work with the local chapter in being able to help residents actually walk through that for that period of time. When we did our night walks, we saw very few things that we would say would be a violation. It would be few and far between, and I really don't think it's residential.
Yeah, I did see in here a positive thing about the historic part of it. That, that if there's a historic structure and it's got a, an existing fixture outside that was put in in the late eighteen hundreds or nineteen hundreds, even there are some, as I read, there are exceptions to that, which is a good thing.
Yes.
Storm?
Well, in fact, as written right now, this policy applies to new builds and if you are replacing lights. So it does not apply like in eighteen months if you have a light that is not in compliance. If it's just there, it's just there. That's something that a future council could decide, oh yeah, the town seems to be interested. There are some outliers, but as it is now, no, no one is, there's not gonna be the light police coming after you.
Yeah. Well, I think this is a great step forward. And you and I had talked privately, what, a year ago or so about this. And I will get with Kevin. I've got two stars by this. That means Greg, do it tomorrow. And, and I'll get with him and have him get coordinate.
Chris? Just a couple of comments. I want to thank you and the committee for all of the, all of the great work. Some, some things in this initial readings that, that I love. Certainly the recommendations for the town and its lighting and its property is, I think, going to be really helpful and probably does not require an ordinance. You know, it would just be town policy that, that could turn that over. I, I have a bit more trepidation on the the private and the business lighting because we are a community of aging population. Many of us living in houses with steep steps and broken up sidewalks out front, as well as a tourism town with people walking around, you know, after dark all evening. So I'm not, not going there. I was wanting to put on some breaks. Part of it is me apologizing for not having been involved more in the past. And I think I need some additional education about what these light levels really mean and, and being able to see some things.
What you will find is when you, when you actually follow the, the key lighting ordinance or the key lighting elements from Dark Sky International, is it actually increases safety. It increases visibility. When you are concentrating light and you have a softer tone light, you have less glare, you have less trespass, especially for aging eyes. I, I have a hard time driving at night. So I sympathize when you get that bright light. This will actually eliminate some of those safety factors, those, those, you know, overbearing glaring kind of things. So one of the things, if we look at this, the way it's designed is actually to increase safety. And as we walked around and looked, even, even the streetlights that, that have been replaced as we walked down Washington, it was easier on the eyes. We had longer spaces that were being lit rather than a bright light shining down. So when, when those fundamentals are followed, you actually have increased safety. We're not asking people to remove lighting from walkways or anything like that. We have no curfew in here. That was something that down said they did not want a curfew. And honestly, if you follow those elements from Dark Sky International, you don't need a curfew. It's just following those simple things. So you can light your pathways all you want to. You know, it would be something lower to the ground. It would be something facing down. It would be softer light. But it, it, the lumen that they chose was a lumen that is safe enough where you would be able to walk outside at night and still be able to navigate without having to squint or things like that. So we did take that into consideration.
And I'll add to that. It's right, it's baked in at the very top and the purpose. One is to minimize light pollution, pollution, light trespass, glare, and skylow. And number two is to ensure output lighting for nighttime safety. Utility, security, productivity, enjoyment, commerce. And a lot of it has to do with, you're just not familiar with the newer technology. I was not familiar with the technologies that can achieve that. And again, the way we've written the ordinance, if you have a new build, it's gotta be built into your plan. But what you have now, you can keep that. And I think we even discussed, you don't necessarily even need to use a dark sky compliant light bulb, but we would encourage doing that. It's actually a more pleasant light. The light temperature is good. And our hope is that in establishing this, that people will start to become familiar with the newer ways of lighting and doing things like timers for exterior lights. And mostly just that that light is being aimed down. It's just not washing everywhere. So that's the objective.
Well, I look forward to more conversation on it.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen. David, go ahead.
Great work. Appreciate the time. I know it took a lot of effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, and I would ask, so next steps at this point, we'll talk to the OCO. And then should Karen come back and represent and maybe provide more information, more detailed information for town council?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Okay, next, planning commission, planning commission report. Zach?
Good evening, town council. Thanks for moving this up. It's a busy time and I can't stick around for all the fun this evening, but happy to give a report now. Planning mission met last month, talked about a lot of things we've chatted about before. We actually have a special meeting tomorrow night here in this room to hopefully, well, to continue discussion and possibly have action on the stormwater mitigation for the four lots on Fillmore Street. So that's an issue that hopefully should finally be resolved. I don't have an update on the comprehensive plan for you yet. The draft has been promised to me this week, but I haven't seen it yet. As soon as I get it, I will forward it along. We, just a few things, a comprehensive plan is always top of our list. A couple of things we're always gonna have on our planning commission agenda, just until we make sure they're wrapped up, are the FEMA floodplain ordinance, which it sounds like has been moved to get FEMA level approval, which is great. We're right on track. Once FEMA approves it, you've already had your first reading. It just then gets its second reading and then everyone in lower town, most in park service. But anyone who's not park service can get their flood insurance, which is great. So thank you on that. Other one, oh, we had a discussion about, no report officially on this yet, but potential of drafting a report to discuss expanding Harper's Ferry's municipal growth boundary, which is a line on a map that doesn't, doesn't mean a lot geographically for us, but it, it could have implications five, 10 years in the future. So we have an opportunity to discuss that. Planning commission will prepare a full report on that. The last one I had, I think, the, it's listed on five E3. I don't know if it's okay if I jump ahead to just mention the, the parking.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
It was a request from a council member that we bring this back up. I don't know if it was 12, 18 months ago, we started having a discussion about the distance between intersections in town and where parking should stop happening. Essentially, no parking here at the corner distances. Somewhere along the line, we had a report from DOH about suggestion about where sightlines could exist that would be in line with state recommendation. I think where we left off on that was the potential to have a call, a joint call with a planning representative, a parking representative, and town legal counsel, just to see where we stood on implementing that. So this was just brought back up at planning and I promised I would mention it here to get the ball rolling on that one again, just to see where we stand and what we can do. So that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Zach on that part of it?
I believe specifically the call, the conversation with the legal counsel specifically was about the report they gave us, is that a all apart kind of thing? Can we use individual recommendations from that or is there an expectation that we use the entire report?
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was Zach and I, but I don't know who it was. I did speak with our attorney about this issue and I got his emails right in front of me. And he says, "The town does not assume any additional liability by failing to adopt any or all aspects of the DOH recommendations." And he did review all of the recommendations and that has been his consistent theme throughout. We do not assume additional liabilities if we don't adopt a recommendation and we're not bound by adopting any or all the recommendations. And we certainly can look into that more. Okay?
On that note, I would add that planning commission would suggest we look at some of them and implement it in the plan. Between planning and parking, a way to, to make it a little bit safer in some of the intersections. But I think that's an ongoing conversation.
Chris?
Zach, I was wondering if we've gotten any confirmation back from the state, the state on the flood plan?
I haven't heard anything yet. I think FEMA may have been affected by the government shutdown. Also, they probably have a reduced staff, so I haven't heard anything.
I was, it's been a while since I sent that off, but I don't remember getting any, even a confirmation that they got it.
Yeah.
So we may wanna
Follow up.
Do a little follow up.
I'll have to stay with Steve's office tomorrow.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, and sorry, the last thing that I just remembered is that, just a reminder that at some point we had, planning commission has suggested language for defining the green area of the zoning map, our third zoning category. I think that ordinance review was taking a look at that. So just wanted to remind us that we're, we're hoping to hear back on that and hopefully get that implemented in concert with the new comprehensive plan, which again, hopefully will be soon. If we, planning commission is not having our regular planning commission meeting in a week due to holidays and many people traveling. And our special meeting tomorrow is just focused on the floodplain mitigation or flood, stormwater mitigation for Fillmore Street. So the earliest planning we'll have to look at the comprehensive plan will be our January meeting. But then hopefully in January, we can move the process forward in the new year, have a new comprehensive plan. That's the full update.
Thanks, Zach. Okay. The other item on the planning commission council is that there are two vacancies on the planning commission. And the seats, number one and seat number two will become vacant on December 31. And so we will be filling seat one or seat two, or if this council so chooses, is not filling seat one or seat two. And they both expire the 20, on 28, so we'll get to there. You should have, and if you didn't get it on time, my apologies to that. There are four residents who expressed an interest in serving on the planning commission. This is an interest. This is not a nomination. And the four residents who expressed an interest are Tim Wise Carver, Roberta Meade Curry, Michael Zalecki, and Amanda McDaniel. These are four individuals expressing an interest to serve. It's this body that makes the nominations. Now, what I'll do is I will call in a minute for, I will open up nominations. You can nominate no one from this body. You can nominate one, you can nominate two, you can nominate three, and then you can nominate four or none. And then once I close the nominations and then we will go to a vote. And a vote is decided by the majority of the number of people who cast a vote. If you choose not to vote, if you choose to abstain, that does not count as a vote. So theoretically, six people at this table could abstain and one person could vote for a person and that person fills the slot. So everybody understands the ground rules according to Robert Gols. That's what we're going by. Okay? All right. At this time, the chair will open up nominations to fill seat number one. Storm?
I nominate Nick Hale Zellicka. One second.
No seconds. Is there any other nominations for seat number one? Chris?
Amanda Mc. Tim Wise Carver.
And the other nominations for seat number one? Okay, nominations for seat number one are closed. I'm gonna ask the recorder to do a voice roll call vote. Kevin, you prepared to do that or I can do it? Let me do it. Okay, I'm gonna call roll. I'm gonna start on that end of the table and I'm gonna work around. Your responses, if you, I will call Mike Zalecki first. Okay? You cast your vote. If Mike Zalecki gets a majority of the votes cast, he is put into seat number one. Is that clear? Okay. All right. So we're gonna be looking at Mike Zalecki now to fill seat number one. If he doesn't receive a majority of votes cast, then we go to Tim Wise Carver. So I'm gonna start with Mike Zalecki. Kevin, yes or no?
No.
Christian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Storm?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Chair votes, yes. Mike Zalecki is filling seat number one. All right. Same process. Chair will open up nominations for seat number two. Nominations are open. Jesse?
Amanda McDaniel.
Are there other nominations for seat number two?
Tim Wise Carver.
Any other nominations for seat number two? Nominations are closed for seat number two. Take Amanda first. Kevin, yes or no?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
David?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Storm?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Amanda McDaniel is appointed to seat number two that expires January, I mean, December 31st. January 31st, 2020.
No.
No, December 31st. Yes, I'm looking at the Parks and Rec. Put that down. Okay. Those seats expire December 31, 2028. Chris?
I'd like to express thanks for Tim and Roberta and their service to the planning commission over the past several years.
And I'll do that a little bit more formally. Yeah, here, here.
Also, one second, Chris is stopped there. And also, the, the new folks don't have to attend tomorrow. Their, their seats start January 1st. So it's not a 24 hour turnaround, thankfully.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, now let's get back on track. We're gonna go to five B treasures reports. Would be review and approval financial report, September 2025. Debbie?
Okay, good evening, town council. This month's financials closed October 25th, after the 1/3 of the fiscal year. This budget revision is number three in the general fund. Our fund balances total 1.2 million and operating income is 1,170,000. Income shown is approximately 50% of what is in budgeted and the expenses are approximately 38% of what is budgeted in this division. The upcoming revision is held in a meeting, though it's less. The upcoming revision that you have will be a meeting, so it's less, um, uh, our income projection based on actual receipts and appropriately appropriate leave of assets. In water, water billings are approximately thirty percent, as is overall income and expenses of under thirty percent. And the upcoming revision that you have will make some adjustments to what is part now changes that affect our spending. Any questions?
Question? We probably talked about this in budget and finance, but, um, can you review why, um, what's going on with the water plant, uh, and why that expense is so high right now?
It's, it's thirty percent.
Water, water plant maintenance, uh, was it ninety two percent of the, um, for the year?
The overall expenses were less than a third for the year, the total that she just mentioned.
Well, for the, for the, uh, uh, average.
Yes, um, so we removed this one.
Yeah.
Which was almost twenty thousand dollars.
So that was the.
That's just a one big chunk invoice, right? And, and we have made adjustments to add a little bit more on that in the revision. But that was a one timer invoice that didn't get spurned out over time, so that's why.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Sludge packs a bunch.
Yeah, that question scared me.
So I move to approve the financial reports as presented.
Is there a second? Second, uh, from Jesse, discussion on a motion to approve financial reports. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero. Debbie?
Okay, and then any questions on the invoices applicable? You have the big one in a half, Green Ridge, two of the dogs that all approved earlier. Actually, one was very low, very high, you know?
I move to approve the invoices and purchases as submitted.
This second, second from Chris, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero. Storm?
Uh, so I'm also going to, uh, just turn this over to Deb that the file said that pressure, pressure reducing faults, work is complete and there may be a little bit of landscaping, although that might be in the past now, and there's no other scheduled work. And we've authorized a drawdown of the remaining bottom funds for use on distribution projects.
And so with this resolution, this is the last bill from Terra Works. And the change order that's going along with this basically kind of balances out everything that they didn't need in the budget. And maybe things that they might need a little more, um, so that now we have a final number from this. That's your change order, uh, balance of change order. There will be two more invoices from G D and F coming in months. And through these final pieces, I can say that we are roughly land in between two hundred and seventy five and two hundred and ninety thousand dollars left of the bond money to put towards other work. So we are developing a good list of specifics. Primarily one is, um, a street that was not included in this project. It was, it was an alternate, but we think it may fit in with this money. So, uh, budget finance will be working on that next week. And then there are handfuls of other items. And, um, so I believe in the next meeting, we will come forward with a plan about where, how to look forward with that remaining money out of the bottom on, um, drop. Okay, so on to, um, actually the change order number four first, the change order of course, that affects the resolution. Um, and that's not really a, we just have to vote to approve it. And if there's any questions?
Go ahead. What are we doing?
Oh, all right. Move to approve W D A grant change order number four as submitted.
Is there a second? There's a second from Chris, discussion on a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, propose zero, motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and resolution number thirteen for the town of Harpers Ferry, including invoices related to construction and other services for the water project and offers of change thereof. Whereas the town of Harpers Ferry has to do the invoice that's due and incorporate herein by reference in relation to the construction of a water project funded by the West Virginia Water Health Authority, E C D Fund, and C and B Bank, construction trust funds, and find as follows, that none of the items for payment is supposed to have been requested from other sources. That each item for which the payment is supposed to be paid was necessary in connection with the project and company, the cost of the project, that each of such costs has been otherwise properly incurred. And that payment for each of the items proposed is due and owing. Now therefore be resolved by the town council Harpers Ferry, that payment of the across and words of that somewhere below are hereby authorized and directed. To G D and F from the C and B Fund is nine thousand and eighty seven thousand dollars and three cents. And to Terra Works of the W D A Fund is one hundred seventy five thousand, nine hundred fifty four dollars and fifty cents. And also from the C and B Fund to Terra Works is forty nine thousand, one hundred seven dollars and ninety six cents.
I move to approve W D A grant resolution number thirteen as submitted.
Is there a second? Second from Chris. Uh, Debbie, is this a roll call I forget?
No.
Okay. Any discussion on a motion to approve? All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Water meter project, uh, very exciting news that, uh, the EPA has, uh, approved the, uh, the proposal. And now it's in the hands of our vendor to actually make it happen.
Yeah, the, the vendor, uh, the engineer has instructed the vendor to do various tasks. The thing you're like at their bond, take a work order and stuff that has to take a couple of weeks. Um, and then we will have the mayor, who already authorized him to sign the notice to proceed. So we will pick the window up to mid, um, we'll go, we should go over that. And, um, uh, I have a call into the governor's office to confirm the match and we'll be done on that sort of.
And just to review, uh, the plan at this point is the first batch of four hundred meters. We'll take delivery of those hopefully in January. And then once the weather is ripe for it and the meter pits are ready, probably in maybe late March, maybe earlier, then they can start going in.
Great news. Great news. Uh, C D S, Storm?
Uh, no, no great change from last time. About five million for, for twenty twenty six C D S. And then also asking for the governor's office for that twenty percent match. And for twenty twenty seven, Deb is already looking ahead with our folks to pick up some of the waterworks items that aren't already covered by C D S that we've gotten to this point.
And by the way, I, a couple of weeks ago, when I met with Senator Capitell, I brought this issue up. And Storm and Debbie, you were both in on the first meeting or second meeting with her. She, for both of you, she well remembers the pipe. That we showed her.
You should have sent her home with that.
Yeah. Uh, discussion actually regarding maintenance of mains contracting.
Yes, so Deb alluded to this, uh, that there were the two projects that, uh, playing whack a mole with the system that's older. This was on Polk Street and Bolivar and Bounder Street. As mentioned, they more or less bounce each other out, um, and the cost is, or am I getting this conflated? Oh, okay.
So the ones that you have to build are, are the Watkin County and Union and Niagara. Polk is, we don't have an invoice for that one yet. Yeah, but Polk did, um, and it might be in Steve's report, did reveal a very large galvanized, uh, service line that, um, had a big leak in it. And so part of the thinking as we're looking towards these, um, potential projects for the bond money is actually spending some focus on some galvanized pipe that really may be, uh, part of the lost water issue that we're dealing with. Um, and there, but there were, if you recall, about five different projects that Green Ridge was deployed for. Um, since Steve is out of town, they've kind of put those on hold, but they are on call if we have any emergencies. And they are, um, continuing to plan and work towards the meter pit replacement work that we have, um, contracted them for.
Who, David?
Steve is just with family right now.
Uh, Steve Barry.
I, I thought you were asking where he was. Okay.
Okay, anything else on that one, Storm?
I guess not.
Especially regarding like twenty six water work budget revision number one. Um, Debbie?
All right, so the income in this revision has not been altered. The expense revisions that you see are largely due to adjustments from staffing changes that have occurred and are coming forth. Um, the most significant adjustments occur in maintenance of mains supplies and contracted services to allow for services that maybe would be required by our on call mains contractor in the absence of personnel to make, um, repairs for leaks that may occur. Uh, the twenty twenty four series A bond financing has been reduced to reflect actual payments required in this fiscal year due to the bond, uh, being drawn down in full on October thirty first. Plant salaries, payroll, tax pension, and healthcare expenses have been adjusted for staff changes. And plant maintenance contracted services has been increased to allow for water production, water production contracted services, should that be required. The other expenses have just been marginally increased in anticipation of normal expenses for the year. Any, any questions about that budget?
I move to approve fiscal year twenty six waterworks budget revision one as submitted.
Is there a second on the motion? Second, Christian, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, um, discussion actually regarding purchase of street signs. Who's got this?
Oh, I, I can take that. I'll, I'll start it, uh, but this came before budget and finance. Uh, the request was made via the town clerk, police clerk to supply information about signage that was needed per the parking committee. Now, Christian, you want to speak to the details more?
These are the signs, uh, we have three of them up already. These are the resident permit, uh, signs, the green white signs. And so we like what we have, so we're gonna order more. And I believe it's twenty signs.
That sounds correct. There are also some other signs.
Yeah, there's maybe some other, but that's the main sign and we'd really like to get that done before spring installed.
It's actually fifteen of those.
Fifteen, okay.
And then there's other traffic signs.
Yes.
So, so.
And we have a lot worn out traffic signs.
Yeah.
Right. I move to spend up to thirty five hundred dollars for street signs as submitted by the town clerk on behalf of the parking committee.
Is there a second? We have a second from Chris, discussion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Of my error, counsel, I skipped over, uh, discussion action regarding monthly invoice review.
I thought you were just really being on the vibe. Just not be there. We don't need to do that one.
We don't do it?
No, we don't. We already did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Unbelievable.
Oh, but the addition.
Uh, discussion action regarding annual state mandated audit.
Yes, uh, so this is mandated by the state auditor office. And there's a set process. The deal became, uh, the bid had gone out for the prescribed procedure. Two bids and one no bid were received. We are required to have three bids, although one can be a no bid formally. Uh, we followed the process and, uh, there was a clear, uh, a clear winner for the contract. And this year, I'll note, is what's called a single audit, which costs a bit more, uh, because it's more extensive than a standard audit. And that's because we have accepted more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the year in government and federal grants. So I move to award the fiscal year twenty five auditor contract to Perry and Associates for thirteen thousand and fifty dollars.
Your second on the motion to approve, second, Jesse, discussion.
I mean, um, we had a hard time with D S D finding auditors for a while. And are there many of those? Is your audit different than like water company and?
Well, an audit's an audit. Uh, if you didn't accept any, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand in, in federal funds, it won't be that much. I think the town could pass along the names.
Give you a huge list of auditors.
Okay. But not the many.
Other discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero, Kevin. Discussion in action regarding general fund F Y twenty six revision number four.
Okay, this revision includes increases in income that were significantly outpacing forecasts in the area of, uh, B and O tax, hotel and motel tax, municipal sales tax, and gaming income. More modest increases have been made in other line items to reflect actual receipts. Expenses in the visitor bureau, distribution, and nine oh six arts and humanity line items offset the increases for the hotel motel tax. City hall includes the increase in employee wage adjustments direct, as directed, and contracted services for I T and accounting. Police department expenses, um, have some adjustments in anticipation of vehicle repairs. And the eight or nine grant line item offsets the increase in opioid settlement, opioid settlement funds that have been received in the three fifty seven other grant income line item.
Yep, and on, on that income, a reminder, or if you weren't aware, we really low balled the income back when we needed to set it. There was a lot of uncertainty about what was coming down the pike at the federal level and what it would mean potentially, uh, for our proceeding. And we had anticipated it was more likely not, not to be a huge swing, but on the chance that it was, we would be prepared for that. So now we're starting to see some of the effects of, uh, things not hitting our town, uh, as much as had been potentially feared. So I move to approve general fund fiscal year twenty six revision, revision four as presented.
Your second on the motion, second, Chris, discussion. I believe this one is a roll call.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, uh, the chair is gonna call roll. I'm gonna start on this.
Oh, hang on, it's actually a thing you have to read. I'm gonna give it to you to sign though. Yep, okay. Uh, here we go. Uh, at a regular session of the municipal council held on December eighth, the following was made and entered. Subject, the revision of the levy estimate budget of the town of Harpers Ferry, the following resolution was offered that the subject, that's subject to approval of the state auditor. As ex officio chief inspector of public offices, the municipal council does hereby direct the budget to be revised prior to the expenditure obligation of funds for which no appropriation or insufficient appropriation currently exists, as shown on budget revision number four, a copy of which is entered as a part of this record. The adoption of the foregoing resolution having been, um, no, that's the end of it.
Okay. Ready to call? All right, Chris, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
Storm?
Yes.
Do we have a, do we have a first and a second, though?
Yeah, we had a second.
Okay.
Um, I don't know who it was. Okay, Chris, uh, Jesse?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right, discussion action regarding alpha engineering proposal update for Henry Clay Street and capital improvement financing.
Uh, no update at this time. Okay.
Yeah. Henry Clay Street, um, David, uh, this is, uh, we had a discussion and we would both be willing to sort of, and have an informal, uh, focus group to deal with the industry project. We both have experience with engineering documents and all that. Paul, and we can reach out directly to some, to some vendors and get them here. And get this Paul, kind of take leadership of that, keep moving because our view.
Twist my arm.
So would like to, we is ready, okay with you guys. And for future planning, um, we would, we would like to bring a Kevin Hamilton in, just as sort of educational process to show him what this is all about. You know, we all get tired next time around. Kevin's still gonna be here. I would like to, you know, leave with a better, better.
Right.
Fair.
Um, do me a favor, put an, an email, just send me an email on what you and David are talking about just so that I can be somewhat educated on what you're gonna be doing behind the curtain, okay? Thank you, both of you for stepping up to the plate on that. Um, discussion action regarding town permit fees.
Yeah, or Chris, do you want to?
Um,
I brought it up here.
Do, do we have a, uh, any?
Yeah, so I'll describe it. So this is something that had first been brought to town council, uh, in December twenty twenty three. And, um, examining the current structure for permits is based primarily on value and that was seen as. Ex- examining the current structure for permits is based primarily on value, and that was seen as being a bit problematic. And uh Chris Craig just sat down with Patty Morse, uh, was in her town, town hall hat. And I believe also Kevin Hamilton was involved to look at what is, what are the standards in the county and with our comparables? And they developed uh a nice and detailed recommendation, the key, the big thing is moving from project value as the standard. For the permit fees to one based on square footage plus inspection fees and also uh flat fees. For some things that aren't larger such as fences or, you know, I'll just say fences, that's the first thing that sprang to mind. And the recommendation that first came down to us was that the square footage uh be rated at seventy five cents per square foot. And there was also a question about is that the footprint or is it the total square footage? And I believe in this plan, it is the total square footage, uh, not just the footprint as is done in some areas. And the consensus of budget and finance was to recommend uh that original plan that was brought forward. Which I believe is the one that was submitted.
Which people.
Chris, I just wanna also throw in that um the other piece of that beyond new construction is um on the. The uh smaller jobs on the house, um. Taking away that based on the the uh contractors estimates that.
Flat fee.
It's a flat fee.
Two separate forms, there'll be a, the consulting compliance permit application. For any project that is not life for life, is that when you get a project permit. And then there'll be a separate one for new construction. And when you look at the documents, you can cut out a lot of information. You have to go through that form for new construction if you're just simply doing deck or patio. So um, it's two different applications, I think the one application we said for new homes or residents, you can take that up. It's new construction, but there'll be two forms, kind of a shorter form and a longer.
And the importance of making that change of time field is that. We do not want to penalize our um residents and our and our property owners. Uh, for spending more money on good materials. Uh, why should it take um more money to get a permit to put on copper vetters than galvanized? With a uh, uh, a metal roof over asphalt shingles, so um.
And then also in new construction, there's a lot of documentation. Now we're getting really on what to run off, we have to have um engineering plan. A lot more. And in new construction, we're trying to tag on dark skies, we do mention um dark skies lighting. We try to get the um developer or the person building the home to do the dark skies compliant threat from the get go. But it's all in.
Yeah. So with the square foot calculation, I just wanna understand how this is done, make sure we're consistent. Cause I could see all kinds of problems with this, the math matters, so like, when I do windows, is it the square foot of the window?
Yeah.
When I do, okay.
Taking the square foot, you're not doing your outline like Kevin calculates or covers.
So what if I'm just doing windows? Okay.
And it is fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a whole menu of things that are now flat.
Okay.
I mean, new construction is um, third grade under roof.
Yeah. So floor by floor.
Yeah.
Basement first floor.
Three floors, three times a footprint time.
And basement.
Yeah, basement first floor, second floor.
Okay.
And it's due construction in additions, correct?
Addition would also be calculated. It's still do the short form for the addition, but if you look at the fee schedule, it says. You're gonna do an addition, it might be a hundred fifty dollars plus.
And there are still fees uh for inspections based on the project, some might require one, two, three, whatever it is.
And it's spelled out easier than it was.
Uh, I move to approve the revised town permit uh fee structure as submitted. With permit fees for new construction and additions under roof assessed at seventy five cents per square foot.
Second. Chris, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand, opposed, zero, motion carries seven zero.
I'd like to to thank Pat and and Kevin Hamilton.
They spent a long time. It's up to the council.
Yeah.
Alright, you got a. Speaking of logo.
Right. Yeah, speaking of, so the logo, it's it's uh it's complete. And and I've been instructed to provide it to Verlissa. Um, and also I did, per the last motion, I think it was the last one, develop a press release. A draft press release, um, so that's theoretically. Yeah, so we'll work that out, and then website, I think where we left that, I don't think we actually constituted uh a group. To actually roll that forward, uh, but Jesse and I are willing to take that on in consultation uh with Kevin as you like. And um and start to to pick up our shovels and make it work, we already have um. A draft wire frame with the headings, and we'll consult with everyone who is a stakeholder involved to make sure that everything is. It's complete and accessible and clean and clear.
Great, great, great. I know that's been uh long coming.
And you will be confering with town staff.
Yes.
Along the way.
Yes.
Water commission, general report.
Um, Steve sent a report.
He did.
Email.
Yep.
Yeah, would you read it, Debbie, I could get a chance to open mine, the chef in there.
Ratings specific for November, uh, filtered water was five million five hundred seventy eight thousand gallons. Build water um was two million six hundred and thirty eight thousand gallons, it was an estimated loss. Because of. Um, so. Take that entirely twice uh greatly there, um, so that therefore the uncounted core water loss is now calculated because of the estimate. Um, for tear works and the WDA project, we could try to do that as well, but our three. We found a replacement that applies to the completed, according to uh tear works and DNF revised plan. Uh, the shut off to the lower town in Turb Street lasted approximately eight hours. Um, repairs have been completed during this month at Cavalier Drive. Uh, there was a mail service line there which tear works repaired, uh possibly due to paving equipment. And that was done under warranty, Washington Street near Boundary was a repair done by Greenridge. Um, it's an old galvanized two H line which is on the same circuit at Mason Way. Uh, Fillmore and Zachary Taylor, the line is in very poor condition. Union and Niagara Way was also contracted by Greenridge, opposite of the service lines, the unit was repaired live without a complete water shut off. Um. And Fillmore and Henry Clay, that was also served by Greenridge, that replaced the galvanized service line, Hulk Street, galvanized. Uh. Service line was replaced by Greenridge that provided service to two homes, the pipe disintegrated. Um. Fifty percent of the pipe was disintegrated, that was the ground, the pipe structure, fifty percent of that was torn. Um, it was a buried curb curb stop valve that led to uh water on us for for four hours. Okay, two forty High Street service line replaced and line eleven cutting port are on hold due to our staffing litigation to support Greenridge when they're in action. Uh, monthly production rates uh indicate an eleven point seven percent reduction. Year over year for the month of November since the distribution service work has been completed, so. Production rate in. Okay, so the production that was required to meet demand in November twenty point four was six point three million gallons. In November twenty five, the production that would be to meet the demand. That's an eleven percent reduction. Um, reduction in calculated rate of water loss to storage tanks between the hours of midnight and two thirty AM. Suggest a drop from fifty seven hundred gallons an hour to forty four hundred gallons an hour, or approximately twenty three percent. Of the rate that we are receiving water, that's also positive. There is a graph attached to the report uh supporting that, uh, for twenty twenty five, there is a distinct change in the capital water loss rate in June. This was when tear works completed the majority of its work, prior to June, the rate bounced between six. Point two million gallons and five million gallons. In June, the loss rate dropped between five million gallons to eight million gallons. There was a brief. We charged a higher rate in August, and that is only to prevent a service line failure, you know, the K O A that Harper's Ferry Water Works personnel repaired. The higher rate through the month of October was due to Cavalier Drive service line failure, that was repaired under warrant by tear works.
Go ahead, David. For the group, this, I'm looking at the early rate hour loss graph, and I kinda don't get it.
Well, you're gonna have to ask Steve.
Well, cause like, what I'm seeing is I'm seeing rates that are, they they spike high, comes down, I don't see like. I don't feel there's a pattern that tells me we're on it.
It's a longstanding mystery.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And feel free to just email him if he has a question or, you know, spend some time with him, yeah.
I don't know if others might have cracked the code.
Yeah, the best guess, the best guess is things are leaky in different places, and it keeps getting pushed here to there, uh, and also the measurement. Metric uses is imperfect, uh, it's better than what was used before, but there may be variability in it.
Right.
But he spikes, I think, of helping to realize that.
Yeah.
Greater emphasis was, and that's helpful, that's helpful.
Could be a water bandit. Uh, water commission Michael is not here, um. By the way, uh, Steve is um dealing with personal issues with his dad, will be gone all week.
Might mention one thing on the water commission that um, one of the things that we discussed and uh. Kind of took home as homework is um to come up with a uh. Recommended policy. Uh, having to do with. The water leak rate. Uh, so when someone uh requests water.
Adjustment.
Was water leak adjustment, um. That there there will be a written policy that will be conveyed to the public so that presently it will not all come back on Steve and town staff.
We have a policy at the PSD, um, I think, do you guys not have us, is there not a?
There is a policy, and and I think what he's really referring to is um, not not the rate itself. But the reasons for the leak adjustment and I think it will be coming to you all too, yeah.
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 Yeah, so.
I maybe can share.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll share what I've got there.
Uh, it was at the meeting.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, water commission number three, discussion action regarding class one water operator PDA job description, you should have that. Um, Chris, are you prepared to address this or? Um, who who's the responsible person that's got this, because I got a couple of things we ought to look at.
Oh, that's, that's uh I O C.
Okay.
That was our job, I I I put that in.
Let me make two suggestions.
Okay.
On the PG, if I could. Um, where you'd have on page two, David, locate and marks water mains and HFWW service lines. Just maybe add a sentence that says which includes responding to eight one one requests in a reasonable time. I think we should specifically say that one of the responsibilities is carrying out eight one one responsibilities. In addition to uh locating water mains for other purposes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I didn't see it anywhere else.
Isn't that as directed by your?
Well, it could be, I just thought, just by the number of them that that we're getting in, like, it's just crazy. And then the other thing, David, under physical tasks and environmental conditions. I looked at this and I was kind of laughing, it's, uh, counsel for your benefit, it says. Work involves exposure to potential physical harm, hazardous chemicals and infectious diseases, including smoke, fumes, gas, treated water. High frequency noise and blah, 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 blah. Maybe it would be better, because to me, this reads like, you take this job, buddy, and we'll put you into culinary room without mask on. We should say, an example, to begin that sentence with employee will be provided safety equipment. And is expected to don this equipment when confronted with the above environmental conditions, or something like that.
I like it.
You know.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Um, other than that, I I thought it was very well done, and uh there's a clear. Uh, outline of what our expectations are, uh, and then holding the um supervisor accountable. Um, for.
Here's my thought, this, by not approving this tonight, we're kind of delaying the hiring process.
We still can, if we approve it as amended.
Let's do it.
What was the question, David?
By not approving this tonight, we wouldn't, would be delaying.
No, no, again, you can.
We wanna go.
Approval.
As amended.
As amended.
The policy, I didn't notice a compensation in there, do we not talk about there?
This is just a job description.
Description.
Okay, so this is, this won't be the job poster, yeah, okay.
Well.
It'll be part of the job responsibilities, yeah.
I didn't know. Last one, people got paid the same everywhere.
Yeah, and and for the record, two.
Okay, thank you, uh, Steve, for that, uh, Steve agrees with the.
Oh, the changes.
Changes. He must.
We're we're also looking at all our positions there, making sure we have jobs, and so we're working on that as well.
Okay.
Uh, this is the one we have in front of us because we have a position to fill.
That's a great start, and and that's a good go by for the rest of them, yes.
Steve, Steve did, Steve found this and we just tweaked it a little bit.
Chris?
Well, can I go ahead and move to?
Move to.
Changes recommended.
Yeah, by the mayor. Yep, your second on the motion, we have a second from David, discussion. Yep, there's a second on the motion. We have a second from David. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Uh, Parks and Rec, discussion action regarding. Appointments to the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, we have two. Um, we will be filling seat number four and seat number five. Seat number four will expire on January thirty one, twenty twenty nine. Seat number five will expire on. January thirty one, twenty twenty nine, and seat number five is a non-voting member. We have two individuals have expressed interest in serving on the. Uh, uh, Parks and Rec Commission. That is Holly. Anne Van Fleet and Amy Avery Van Fleet. So we're gonna fill seat number four, hopefully, uh, so the chair will open up nominations for seat number four.
Which is the voting one?
That's the voting one.
Uh, nominate Holly Anne Van Fleet.
Is there other nominations for seat number four? Chair will call, Chris?
I vote aye.
Uh, Storm?
Uh, aye.
Jesse, or David?
Aye.
Christian?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Myself. Number five, chair will open up nominations for the non-voting member on seat number five.
Nominate Avery Van Fleet.
Nominate Avery Van Fleet. Is our other nominations from the floor? Very none nominations are closed. Chris?
Aye.
Storm?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Christian?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Patty, for your cheat sheet. Uh, O R C, discussion action, appointments, O R C. Kevin, do you have anything to report?
Uh, yeah, I realize we were at that point. Thank you for reports since I've been out for a couple of months.
Okay.
Anything?
Yeah, we've made a, uh, a um. Little to do list and we will be meeting in the near future, I believe. Start work. Or continue work.
Okay, so we have a discussion in action regarding first reading for approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six. Removal of article nine oh nine point oh four. Uh, council recall. This was holding um a people accountable to clear the snow on the sidewalk. Um, we took this to Mr. Sayer and um we got clearance from him to remove it. And so, and I believe that. We were just going to um strike it from the internet and then um. Realize that we, there's a little bit more than just striking it that we have to go through a first read on that. So, um. Go ahead, Kev.
So, I would, um. I would make a motion, first of all, that we. Um, go ahead and consider this item, uh, even though it hasn't been at the. Um. At the ordinance review committee. For discussion.
So, are you opining not to deal with it tonight?
No, I'm opining to deal with it tonight.
Ah, okay, even though.
But I didn't discuss it at the ordinance review committee because we didn't feel that there was a need to.
Ah, okay. Alright. So what I'm gonna do is just read, what do I, I've never read one of these before. As a mayor, you guys read, did I just read the first part of it?
Yeah, I, what I can do.
Okay, you got it in front of me?
Yeah. It's ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh six and ordinance to remove section nine oh nine point oh four of the codified ordinances. So, first of all, I need a second for the motion that I made.
A second.
Chris, discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion Kevin made, opposed, motion carries seven zero.
And then a, a motion for approval of the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance for first reading.
Did he just make the motion?
Been okay. Motion to approve uh ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six.
Is there a second? We have a second from Christian, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero. Alright, I'm gonna roll here.
Is this it then? Yes, this, we don't have to do anymore.
We have to vote one more time.
One more time in January.
Yeah.
An ordinance to, it requires an ordinance to rescind an ordinance, right?
Yes, however something is established, that is what you must do to remove it by Robert's rule.
In the state.
I O C, David, you have anything?
Um, yeah, we're, we're, you have before you the class one water operator. We're updating those. Um, we're trying to find out if we have all of them for all the positions that are there. If we don't, we'll be working on those. Um, we establish a process by which to. Um, interview, do these interviews for the class one operators, for the number of the I O C, coming from the Water Commission and Steve. Be on that group and they're gonna um. Conduct the interviews and provide recommendations to the council.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Any questions for David? Okay, um, under. Uh, I, Human Rights Commission. We don't have a human right, we have a Human Rights Commission, but we don't have a staff.
We got some people on here.
We've been advertising the, uh, people to fill out those three positions for some time.
We only have one interested person so far.
It has been defunct.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. So the Human Rights Commission. We have an ordinance governing that, but we have no bodies in that commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a request from an individual. To be the. Um, Human Rights Commission, I guess, with one person.
Also, that's three.
To be a member, right?
And my understanding is, uh, it it will not, he will not be enabled to. Able to be active unless, until we get a quorum. Which I think would be two, uh.
It's two.
Two people.
Yeah.
We can, could have a committee of one. Uh, unless it's specified that it has to be. Okay.
Okay. Alright, so we've received a letter of interest in serving on the Human Rights Commission.
I suppose we could appoint someone, but they couldn't be.
Yeah, this is um, maybe another way would be to hold this. Pending, uh.
Yeah.
Till we get another individual, we can table this. I mean, I, David, I mean, uh, Jesse, you've got a.
I'd hate to turn someone away who's actually volunteering. You know, if we approve them, they, they. I think if we approve them, it gives the, the appearance that we actually want this to be. Open it up and would help it, will make it easier to recruit a second person. If they're, you know, all they have to do is show up and submit their interest, the committee could be active. Instead of having to go through this other extra step of refining, you know, tying him back in. Now, you know. It's a pretty big step, you know, it's a, um, just to put your neck out there for, for this right now. And when it's been vacant for so long, I hate to just turn them away. When they have, you know, are volunteering.
Chris? I think I agree with that. Um. And um, in light of. Storm's comments before the meeting, which I very much, uh. Feel aligned with, um, I think there are. Some major issues out there that, uh, um, I believe the town needs to. Respond to in some way. And that this might be a, um, a proper place to begin the discussion about it.
Okay. Alright, uh, the chair will open up nominations for. The um, Human Rights Commission.
Raven Buckley?
Are there any other nominations to serve on the Human Rights Commission? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Storm?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chair, no.
Putting somebody on to the seat. And the expiration, and I'm looking at the ordinance. And it does say that the appointment will be three year term. Mentioned on the Thursday of Jan, of that year, January. So, appointing now, or is it December? Would we count January, would this be the first year and then give two more years?
By the latter, yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
So, his expiration date would be.
Can we?
December.
Can we make him effective next month?
Can we make him effective next, like we're gonna point him.
Why don't you appoint him for January?
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what, you'll take that, Patty, to your appointment date on that, okay? Unfinished business discussion action regarding population trends committees, six month study period. This was a, a undertaking by David and. Storm and myself and um. Um, we're getting things, or David's getting things rolling on this. And David, did you want to report on this?
Yeah, just that they. The committee wants to get started. They didn't want to be penalized for that six month clock studying the tick. When they're getting to know each other and getting started. So what they want to do is have their first meeting. Six month doesn't start and they just get to know each other, kind of come up with some ideas of how they want to work together and then they'll do the. And then the second meeting, they'll do their elections and start their work.
Okay.
But they feel like they need to. It's, it is a broad kind of topic we've given them and they wanna kind of get their feet under them before they dig in. So they, I think they all understand it's gonna take some research and.
Okay.
Um, good planning.
So the first meeting would just be, have a session, right?
Yep, yeah, they won't, they won't. They won't elect officers and then the next meeting they'll.
Could you let Storm and myself and obviously yourself know when that meeting is? Cause I think I'd like to pop in on that and just. Welcome them and thank them. Storm, feel free to do the same thing, okay?
Yeah, if you're speaking, we should probably put a motion just to say to allow this committee to have a meeting. Prior to the official start, just because it does say in the other one. So I moved to allow the population trends committee to have uh a preliminary meeting. That will be before the formal. Done of the committee's.
Charge.
Charge.
Do you like the way the mayor jumped in on that?
I appreciate that.
Is there a second on the motion? Second, Christian, discussion. All those favorite motion? Provin, motion carries seven zero. Thanks on that, David. Uh, the zoning category, did we, um, I thought we talked about the third zoning category, as Zach did or somebody did.
You mentioned it.
Yeah, Zach mentioned it. We mentioned it here. Um, I don't know that it's ever gone any further than that, you know, planning the state.
Yeah, it was sent to O R C.
Okay.
We had a initial discussion about it and kind of agreed that we needed more information. Um, I met with planning, um, this last month. I uh feel a lot better informed on what the need is and what, uh, what the request is. So I'll be taking that to O R C at our next meeting.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Chris. What is the, what is the outcome? Is the language changed to an ordinance?
Well, the, the request from planning is to um enact a third zoning category. Which basically, uh, the proposal was to be, to call it conservation and basically that would be, um. Land that is, um, owned by other jurisdictions, uh, federal, uh, state. Um, and at some point, we might want to incorporate, um, town parks into as well.
But I think, um, but ultimately it's gonna be, does that like residential use?
A new category, yeah.
Yeah. And, and if you look at the zoning map up here above you, we're talking about the green areas, so. It would not be changing the map anyway. It would be giving a name for those green areas.
So that it's not just locked in with residence. Different rules that apply to it. I don't know about, you know. The, the terminology, uh, conservation versus institutional or anything else, like is it strictly speaking, you're conserving it? Or is there another term?
Uh, I'll be happy to sit down with you about it, but a planning came, came by that after quite a bit of deliberation.
Okay, uh, next item, discussion action regarding adopting the conflict of interest policy and procedures. Um, there was a draft put together, um, and then you should have. The original draft plus, um, some red line suggested changes to the original draft for a policy. And so that's, uh, before you. Uh, it's, it's, I don't know, Jesse, you and I and I guess Storm or who else worked on this? Yeah, um, kind of a standard thing for organizations and I don't know if you wanted to make an introductory comment or. Before we open it up for discussion. Either one of you.
Yeah, so the, um, the basis, um, it's been a long time coming. A best practice policy, all organizations with more than two employees should have. Um, this ordinance was based on, uh, Mayor Vaughn's experience with at the federal level. He asked some other folks, the, um, I believe the West Virginia municipal, leading some other, um. Inquiries were sent out and then I applied, um, information that's. Um, from the private sector, finally found in the finance sector, um, dealing with, uh. Paying acquisitions and things like that. Conflict of interest in it. It's beyond, um, simple finance. It is, um, financial, personal and relational conflict, uh, which is the, the stand. The standard in finance. Is all those three categories. And it's, um, it is. The, the draft is, uh. Fairly straightforward. It does have, um, a lot of leeway. Uh, for the individuals as well as town council. To make determinations on what. Um, actually is a conflict of interest. You know, it's very situational. You can't just apply. Um, one rule to all situations, um, you know, and this allows the town employees and other parties. Um, to address each situation individually, but also, um. Uh, police concerns that, uh, town employee might have about reporting. There's a conflict of interest, you know, there's a, um. There's, there's no, um, there's no penalty involved if you have a conflict of interest, you know, you disclose it and it's done. There's no penalties. There are penalties if you have a conflict of interest that you do not disclose. Or if you continue to engage in a conflict of interest after the town has determined that a conflict exists. Um, there can be penalties after that. There is a remedial, uh, remediation policy, which is pretty straightforward and standard. The, um, if there is a. If town decides that there's a conflict of interest or a potential conflict of interest, or the appearance of a conflict of interest. They can remove specific duties from a county employee for a very specific item. So they would be. Um, you know, the, this person would not be doing this very specific thing for this very specific project. Or goal and you know typically. When remediations are employed, those, those terms and conditions are laid out. Um, you know, by the, you know, whoever the authority is, that'll be us, I suppose. They would, you know, lay those out very clearly. This is what you can and can't do and this is why, um. The, it is all disclosed in public like that because we are dealing largely with the perception issue here. Uh, you know, the. I don't think anyone in here, um, has any concerns about anyone, you know, gaming the system and. Playing both sides with confidential information. But the, the appearance of that is enough from, from a government or even a senior management perspective. To derail all conflict in the body going forward and. It also opens you up to, there's a lot of liability involved. Um, if you don't have a policy and there's a conflict of interest that is. Escalated on or appeared to be escalated on or acted upon by someone. And this, um, gives us, reduces that liability, gives everybody a way out without, um. Punishing anybody or harming anybody, you know, remedial actions are remedial for the situation, not remedial towards the person. It's, it's diffusing. It's, it's diffusing a problem, not dealing with, you know, it's not diffusing a person, it's diffusing a problem. And, you know, it's, um, that's about it. I realize it was a lot more than just introduction, but, um, that, that is where, where it's at. I mean, I could answer. I think David has. Do you still?
I did have a few.
All right.
Um, cause I asked him, how do I do this? Send you a. So, um, in the document, we, we said, we talked about town council a lot, but it was a mayor and town council. Is that intentional or?
No, the, the mayor is a member of town council.
Yeah.
We're a class four. We. Okay. We can, we can. Put in the word mayor there.
If he's a, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah.
If he's a member of town council, then I wouldn't make changes I'm recommending. Cause it, it, it's a several location.
Yeah.
So.
If you're uncomfortable with that, we can say the mayor and town council. But the mayor is part of the town council.
I'm not.
Well, okay. So would, would, if we add the mayor, would that also give the mayor, uh, a little, would that make it easier for him to approach? A particular conflict, make the situation by himself without having to roll in the whole capital. So would that make it?
Yeah. Uh.
Yeah. That, that is what I was about to ask, like.
Okay.
Cause I, you know, you want it to be in front of the whole body, right?
Well, we do, but you know, if there's a, if there's a, if it could be, if you improvise, I mean, it's always better.
Yeah.
You know, if, if it's just, if it's just a squaring things up and make sure we're on the same page. I, I don't see a problem with the mayor.
Yeah, we, we should probably try to diffuse something at the lowest possible level, not involving a, a cast of thousands. If it, if one person can, you know.
And by having this documented, it's something the town council has approved and can be pointed at. But this is the policy of the town and I'll underscore that the appearance of impropriety can be as damaging as actual, uh, improper, impropriety. And that, um, having that not happen is a good thing for the town.
And, and I wanted to say. I have been, was attacked by this. In, uh, by the ethics commission, uh, some unknown resident in town reported me and for. Overly outlandish claim they were making. And I had to do a lot of work and get a lot of people involved to save my reputation. And I wasn't even on town council anymore. Uh, this happened in, uh, early twenty twenty four. And, um, I, I was just shocked and it takes a lot to get it fixed. Um, and, and, and you get your reputation just strewn out there in a little town like this. And it's, it's terrible. And so this, this is a good idea and having this, but I don't think this person should have brought it up to the level of the state. Uh, I, I didn't appreciate that.
Chris?
You know, I, I guess I have some concerns, um, about vagueness and, um. In, uh, we, we have a very little town and I'm not talking about the financial in at all. I think that's pretty straightforward. It's also the only thing I understand that the state.
That's all they look at, what money looks at. This is money.
I mean. The personal and relational issues that are mentioned. We have this tiny town with a women's club and trail clubs and A T C and churches. And, um, everyone's involved in things. Um, are we gonna be concerned? Are you, uh, if you're on the board, uh, if you're an officer, if you contribute money? Um. You know, I, and it, and these things have come up. Um. So I. I, I, I just, I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I don't know how important it is on those two, on those things beyond financial. Um, so, uh, but I, I don't feel ready to vote for it as it is.
Yeah, and I can say with, with, what you're saying, Chris, is also we have spouses that are involved.
Spouses.
I mean, this, this town is children. And if you're active in the town, you're bossing in every aspect of this town.
So that's why it was written the way it was and that, that, you know, to take any action requires the town council. To, to actually take action on any of this stuff. And I think that's a built in safety, as you know, this, I, I just cannot imagine a situation where. A, a, a two person, interpersonal, you know, squabble is, is, is leading all the way up to the town council. And the town council is going to vote on somebody's squabble. You know, I just, that's a, that's. It's an unreasonable situation, I think. And, you know, the whole, the whole idea behind this is, um, reason. Not, it's, it's, um, specifically to address reason. And I kinda hate to. It's, it is vague, but it's also easy. And so as we, if we try to dial it down to specific, specifically to finance or specifically to individual issues. Um, I, I think that it loses a lot of its ease. It becomes more difficult to deal with and it makes it. It makes it less of a situation where, for example, the mayor could go have a discussion based on this policy. And make a problem go away. You know, the, the greater specificity that it has, the, um, you know, the. It becomes to, to address what shouldn't be a big issue. And it's, uh. I like vague rules and, you know, I, I think also I like them vague, but also like that there are safeties in here specifically say, you know, these are, um. Now, there's no penalties for any of this stuff, you know, unless there's a clear conflict of interest, which is a, um, which is a situation I hope that we won't ever. Do, but you know, the, the, the day to day stuff, like you're talking about relational stuff, things like that. I believe those can be resolved here, you know, uh, without the, the, um. Without the need to, to specify individual situations in the ordinance. This is a, or a policy, excuse me, this is an easy way to have a policy. That, um, you know, it's, it's not, I, I don't think it's overbearing, you know?
I think there's, the, the problem I have is you're in a public town council. This is all on video. This is saying, you're gonna talk about some individual and I don't know about that. I mean.
Well, if we're talking about individual, it should be under, it will be handled under, um, the decision. If it's.
If it's, okay, I could live with that, yeah.
No, there's not gonna be anything.
No.
Public, no. Yeah.
And I'll say that I do see the value, uh, particularly in disclosure being the cure. I think that it can be a little tough if it's vague. How far do you go in disclosing if you are a donor, if you're a board member? I have a clear idea in my head about it. Um, I do know a national level subject matter expert on this, who I was not able to get to weigh in. In time, uh, for this meeting. But I could, um, run it by them to see if there might be something that might be a little more concrete. But still offering the flexibility. Uh, and this is someone who has dealt with the largest companies and small nonprofits and everything in between.
Sure, why not? I mean, if you've got confidence in that person.
Very high confidence.
And we're talking about a lot of people here. This is, this, I don't know, what is this, like thirty, forty people? I mean, when you add up all these committees, commissions, you add up all the employees in town, you add up town council, I mean. The town.
Why that's why the council is important, um, is because it is. There are so many people involved. Um, you know, we want to keep this entirely above board. And, you know, it has not come out yet, um, but you know, the questions like this come back to audits and things too. You know, there, there are.
Jesse, it's not the overbearing I'm concerned of, it's kind of the opposite. It's, um. Being so vague that it leaves itself open to, anyone could express a concern about almost anything. So, that's my concern.
Well, let's do this. Um, Storm has volunteered to reach out to, uh, an individual. And, uh, David, you may have some comments on it or Christian or, or Chris or, or Kevin. Get those to, to Jesse, uh, or myself. And then with those comments in combination with, um, Storm's contact, uh, we can come back with another shot at this. I, I will tell you that in reviewing tons of, uh, conflict of interest policies and procedures. They're, they're all very similar to this type of, um, of verbiage. Um, and rightfully so. And, and most of these come from government agencies that I've reviewed, the corporate sector and, and so. I don't think we're that far off, uh, but get your comments to, to Jesse or myself. And then Storm will, um, get, uh, his contact unless you're opposed to that force of, uh, direction for this item.
It's a good idea.
So we'll just table it until we get additional information.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I, I really like the idea. I, I think it is more about disclosure than it's about your concern, which is people using it as a cudgel. Or, you know, like some, I feel like it's, it puts us on notice and if you're serving on notice to disclose these conflicts more than it. Allows someone to come after you.
Yeah.
And I feel like that's what it's.
And I think I would be fine with that if that spelled out.
I don't think we're gonna spell it out well enough. Like, there's gonna be some vagueness.
No, I, I mean, just saying disclosure rather than. Leaving it much more wide open, uh, exactly.
Make some suggestions, Chris, if you, if, if, if you could, and that would be very helpful.
Email both of you.
Yeah. So you have before you, um, a recommendation for the twenty twenty six. Um, employee holiday schedule. I mean, we routinely do this every year. It's been done since, I guess Jim Addy was mayor. Um, any, excuse me, suggestions or edits on that? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion to adopt the employee holiday schedule as presented.
Go ahead, Kevin. I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second from Chris, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Uh, can you reach out to the governor? Just find out for sure when he's going to, I'm just kidding.
Oh.
But this, yeah. He keeps doing this all the time, like it, the day before announces, all state employees are off. How many times he's done that? Well, Justice was really mad. Well, you can't plan.
Okay. Um.
Just kidding.
Discussion action regarding parking in town for safety. I believe this was yours, David?
Yeah, and that brushed you a little bit. Um, I, I'm interested, last meeting, I think we talked about the parking policies. And I brought up some of the, um, I call them complaints Heidi had about just driving in town and turns and. So now that I know there's a part in highways report that might come out, I'd just like to remand something, some study to the planning commission. They can kind of come forward with us with some recommendations. Um, sounds like you have the attorney's opinion on those. Um, if they could just collate it all and bring something forward to us.
Yeah.
To recommend it.
Do you want, I need to bring it up?
I would, yeah. So I'm gonna, I think I wrote a motion, let me find it. Bye bye, guys. Yeah, I moved, so I, I'd like to make, unless you guys wanna discuss more about what I'm thinking, but I think we covered it earlier. Like the turning out of the ball of bread, turning from Gilmore around to. Washington, those kind of things that are kind of difficult right now. Um, I moved that we ask planning commission to evaluate parking areas in the town. And provide recommendations for improvements to the town council. Recommendations should include a map indicating revisions to existing parking areas.
Second on the motion? Second from Jesse, discussion?
I think the parking committee should be involved in this.
I was gonna read just.
The signs.
I was just gonna suggest that.
And we do have to be careful a little bit. I know we, we're watching for safety, but we're also watching, uh, there's a fair amount of town revenue that comes from. To keep, you know, we can't have a sign fifty feet from the end, end of the intersection. We have to have something reasonable.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion, we got a second, so why don't you, Christian, amend the main motion by the parking committee?
I amend the, uh, main motion by adding the parking committee as being part of this process.
Is there a second on the amendment? Second from Chris, discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
I'm wondering, uh, are we talking about, uh, the two committees meeting together or, uh, having discussions separately and then?
I think that, I think that the parking committee should be brought in. Um.
I mean, we could wait for whatever the planning commission does and then we can look at it. Uh, but we have, we have safety involved. I mean, we have the, the chief isn't on that committee. Melissa.
That we're planning heard this initially, the, um, I, uh, we need to, uh. Tabled it because it had a, um, a negative revenue impact. And it was based on hearing back what the lawyer said about, um, our liabilities and picking and choosing from this. So, um, planning is sensitive. If, and what I will do is I will get with that. And I think you guys should be just kind of planning. And so we, we can make that happen.
So go ahead and withdraw, I guess, your amended motion.
So what'll happen then?
It's that parking would, parking committee would attend the planning commission meeting with. And provide input into the planning and comment. Or are you gonna go forward with your amended motion?
For a vote on it.
I'm just trying to think of the best way to do this. Uh. We're, we don't, we don't meet regularly, so I guess, I assume we're gonna meet in January for parking. The mayor is the head of the parking committee. So, um, non-voting member. Um, what if you, what if Plan does the first part of the work and it makes its way to.
I mean, I would like.
And parking, right, like.
Yeah, so I do feel like, you know, the police chief in particular is the person who is responsible for safety, uh, on the streets. And also is an expert very much in the patterns here and safety. So at the very least consulted, if not run through the parking commission again, in order to have that layer of expertise.
And he's helped us place most of those signs, almost all those signs.
I mean, can't we just have a special meeting between the parking? Deal with this, they were going back and forth, cause there are, uh, it's gonna be brought up that this, because this is in the, the town right away. That, you know, it has to have final approval for planning. If we could do it together, we're, we're, in a whole bunch of potential back and forth.
Mm-hmm. I think that sounds.
All right, so we, you want to go to a special meeting between the two?
Yes.
Okay, so what then I have to do is to call for a vote. On the motion that's on the floor and we will disapprove for all of them. So, Kevin?
Was there a second on the?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's the amended that you're going.
Yeah, we're gonna do all of them.
Of both of them.
Yeah.
Someone has to.
Okay, and well, this, and then somebody will come back with a clever motion that we have a special meeting between parking and planning to address the issue. So the chair is now gonna call for a, um, all those in favor of approving the amended motion, raise your hand. Opposed. amended motion fails. All those in favor of approving the main motion, raise your hand. Opposed. Main motion fails. Chair will entertain a new motion.
I move to convene a joint meeting of the planning commission and parking commission to address. Uh, safety issues, safety issues with parking in town.
Is there a second on that motion? We have a second from, uh, Jesse, discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, uh, seven D, discussion in action regarding municipal thirteen twelve oh two. Pass those down, would you, Chris?
Uh, you should have, you'll have, you have thirteen twelve. Uh, business district uses. And if you focus on thirteen twelve oh two A two, I was just wondering if there isn't some utility. Um, in having a discussion.
Um in having a discussion or addressing thirteen twelve oh two. Wherein the issue of the twenty-five foot restriction is imposed.
Say that again.
Okay, on here, Kevin, on uh thirteen twelve oh two sub two. It talks about twenty-five feet. I am just wondering if there is any utility in discussing. This.
The twenty-five.
Twenty-five foot issue.
I think there is, and I think this precludes almost any restaurant ever being residential.
Or in the business.
Business. Uh I think twenty-five feet maybe from a building, but not a lot.
Remember, this is a business district. This isn't a residential district.
You know, saying, no, this is business district.
Yeah, this is true.
This is a business district.
Yeah.
Like, so it's zone business.
Correct, yeah. And that, but it is still subject to this restriction, which I believe has. Come up before and been applied inconsistently and I don't know if it makes much sense.
I don't, I don't know where it comes from. Does anybody on the council know where this originally? I know that. The other jurisdictions, I checked two or three of them in Jefferson County, do not have anything like this, so. I don't know where this came from.
It worked around in twenty, two thousand and two. Let's find that, those guys.
It also occurs twice in here.
Uh two thousand and fifteen.
At the one B number three, um it occurs.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that's all about either.
From uh state code, because it's the origin state code, right?
Yeah.
Up state code.
And you know.
I didn't find, I looked in Charleston, they don't have this.
If you look at the permitted uses on subsection A, you got four of them, one, two, three, and four. The number two is the only one that's applying the twenty-five foot restriction to it, that that the footage is not applied to the other ones. So I I don't know what what the background is. I thought maybe.
Well, conditional uses, there's three. There's small recreational facilities, which I don't know what that. The gym, I mean, I don't know.
Pool hall.
A pool hall, right.
Um we can turn this over. Yeah, I I'm, Kevin, and I think we may wanna send this to O R C to take a look at it, okay? Is that okay with everybody on the council?
Yeah.
How about somebody put that in a motion somewhere? We'll we'll defer uh action on this to O R C. Uh Chris.
I move to refer. Article thirteen twelve to O R C uh for possible revisions.
You're second on that motion. We have a second from uh Storm. Second, discussion on a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh discussion action regarding potential acquisition of additional vintage radio wave light fixtures.
Yes, yeah, Christian.
I I I don't know that super well. I've read the letter a couple times, but our our buddy, uh, no, what's his name?
Barry.
Barry, out of Saint Louis. He's always watching for us for radio lights. And we need more, and it's part of, it really is part of the dark sky. And as a matter of fact, that's why this town really complies fairly well with it. Because of those lights. And he has found a municipality that has the same lights in uh Maine. Uh Freeport?
Rockport.
Rockport, rockport.
Oh, where they make.
Oh, so, yeah, and they have like eight of them of potentially available now. They may use it on a bridge. They're talking about use on a bridge, but that Barry thinks that's not gonna happen. He's, he's thinking ahead. And uh but he thinks we should write a letter and ask in the municipality um for for these lights. And I believe they would just give them to us. We would have to pay obviously to get them.
For a road trip.
Oh, we got some thoughts. Great story. Now, the lights do need to be modified because they're not in, they're not geared, uh they're geared for sodium bulbs or something. They have to be changed. Part of the guts, but the radial part, the arms, the arms, our our arms are silver, their arms are green. But but we can get them repaired. And we have a couple here in the, in the town hall too.
And it was among the recommendations when you read them was there are some spots to acquire vintage radio wave lights, cover gaps, so it's. It's quite fortuitous if they're willing to.
And it fits to where we're adding homes and there's dark spots. And we have our blanks.
Want to, uh, somebody put something in here, direct the mayor to um send a letter of request to Rockport, Maine. With approval of travel expenses and.
No options, no options. Yeah, I've moved to direct the mayor to make inquiries with the town of Rockport, Maine. To potentially acquire their surplus radio wave lights.
Second on the motion, we have a second from uh Jesse. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
He said they're the same.
Alright, uh. Uh it might be better for you to come up here. Let's try to do F and declare first. If we decide that we can't do it, declare, then we'll have to go into executive section. Just in case, Christian, could you pull off the executive section stuff on the board behind you? Pass it down to me.
Yep.
I'm not saying we're in executive session now, we're not. Okay, so we've got um. Lease for the postal. And um Patty brought this to my attention, I don't know, about a year or so ago and and. We need to deal with this, the postal, because I understand it has a private entity that. Um it works on behalf of the United States Postal Service. And they negotiate these kinds of things all over the country, postal offices like ours. And Patty has been um chasing this uh ball for a long time, trying to uh. And she started with getting uh you and George Owens and who was the third?
Inverted George and myself sat down and threw it, was applying to Cohen and came up with some. Points of interest that I. And we got pretty much ironed out, but now. Before I can start talking through this real estate agent. Because of money involved with the town, I couldn't say, but we'll take it. But Christian and I sat down together and the day before we were gonna meet, I just must have had the magic words because I googled it. And I got a a recommended number uh for a post office lease. And the post office government lease is always a lot less than a regular commercial lease. It's just the way the world is. So I wrote this all up for everyone. The current lease does expire in April, I meant, I'm sorry. Office, so it's really time to get push on this, to get this wrapped up.
It's the government we're dealing with.
Well, I've had it for two years.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, like I said, I kept putting it back because we had two years to work with it.
The last time it was an automatic renewal.
That's because they were exercising.
That's right.
To renew, and that was their last option to renew.
They gave you dollars.
So we were, so basically what they're asking for is a new five-year term with two five-year options to renew, and that's very standard. Uh I took the square footage that um they're leasing downstairs. The interior of the post office area. And um I calculated what the rate that they were offering. And they were offering like nine dollars and sixty-seven ninety with square foot at a fixed rate for five years. And then if they took their option to renew, at five years down the road, it'd be a ten percent, flat ten percent increase. That would run for five years and then another flat ten, but then it's. So if you look at their exhibit C, the post office notes that their rental square footage is three, is three thousand three sixty. They also break out the loading dock with two hundred and sixty square feet. And then, of course, the parking area, which they were asking for the entire area, but we'll visit that later. So since they, the post office is the only user of the dock, we're gonna get around. So instead of charging them rent on just three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet, I would charge them around three thousand five seventy-six. Well, I would include that square footage. They did, they excluded. And and we actually maintained it. Again, I told you my Google search, um.
And I, and I did a search too, and it was fairly close number, so to hers.
So what I might suggest is you always go high and you can come up. So either fifteen dollars a square foot or twenty a square foot, but I would base, I would use the square footage of the rental area plus the dock.
Nick, um can I ask the council not to?
I'm looking for the exemption. I'm I'm looking for. I'm looking for the exemption on this. I think there is one.
There is for contracts.
Well, if you want, well, I mean, I gave you the numbers here. Um the other sticking point is uh they were asking for a six percent state commission. And I said, I have to update, no, we're not gonna do that. Uh so in my year and a half, I've been with them, they come down to a level of say four percent. Um and I've gotten some other advice, I mean, from other entities, but we don't have to pay, we don't have to pay anything.
Alright, let me uh. Let me make a recommendation. We went on executive session, case of fund exemption six nine eighty dash four. Subsection nine, consider matters upon the lease sale, purchase of property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
What was that number again?
Question two.
What was that number again?
Yeah, it's six, definitely it is six nine eight dash four. Rent nine. And we have a motion from Storm. We have a second from. Kevin?
Uh whenever I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um are we also going to discuss seven G?
While we're in. We are.
We'd have to put another number.
Put in that number as well.
Well, I was gonna do that just once we.
Okay, okay.
I'll do it separately. So we have a second. Who's the second? Chris, discussion. All those in favor of an executive session? We're in executive session at nine twenty P M. I'm authorizing the finance officer and the administrator officer to attend the executive session. I'm authorizing the finance officer and the administrative officer to attend the executive session.
Okay, we're out of executive session.
I want the executive.
I count four hours of executive session is at 10:05 p.m. Agenda item seven. G, discussion action regarding employee personnel.
That's your motion.
Make a motion effective immediately December 8, 2025, 10:04 p.m. Harper's Ferry terminates the employment of the Harper's Ferry Waterworks employee suspended on October 21st, 2025.
Second on our motion. We have a second from David, discussion on the motion. Hearing on all those in favor, the motion, raise your hand. Oh, the motion carries now, three, seven, zero.